On the April 2nd, 2024 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stay and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shirek.
Here.
Merritts.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
I'm going to have a moment of silence for Leon Reiser. May he rest in peace. Before you are the minutes from the March 18th, 2024 council meeting, regular council meeting. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Creating permission for visitors to speak. Does anybody want to address council?
Please state your name and address.
There's now a five-minute time limit instead of three minutes.
Brent Fisher, 430 Stevens Court. I'd like to talk to you all about the Bratwurst Festival, in particular, the funding. I come from a pretty unique perspective. The Bratwurst Festival was born out of a retail merch promotion called Colonel Crawford Days. In the first year, it was actually Colonel Crawford Days and Bratwurst Festival. Ned Harden and some of the people from the Pumpkin Festival came up as we put this together. In that particular year, I was the assistant director of it and probably one of the few people living out of that original group of people, literally. I was going to college, working for my dad in his hardware store. Dick McCall was the director. I was assistant director. Jane Gardner, who managed the AAA, was entertainment and deserves a lot of the credit for what the festival is today. Menter Larson was in charge of facilities. And Bill Blicky was in charge of promotions. And we kind of invented that. That first year, Dick was going to Boeing Green to get his master's degree, so I ended up actually doing a lot of it. And the next year, the very first year, it was officially the Bratwurst Festival. I was director. So I speak from a really unique perspective. And I think that the money that the city expels to provide the services for the festival is pocket change for the rewards we get. If our city had spent a quarter of a million dollars over the last 50-plus years promoting our city, we wouldn't get the bang for the buck that we get that the festival has. Bussaras is known world over, literally, made national game shows that we are the Bratwurst Festival. So I think that's a very important thing to consider. Give you a little perspective on that. I have a point-of-sale software company. This is our 31st year in business. In February, I went to a trade show that I got a chance with a couple, few thousand attendees, that I paid $9,700 for a 10-by-20-foot space. By the time I got my booth there, my employees, motels, and travel and everything, I had $17,000 in it. And here we get, literally, tens of thousands of people coming to Bussaras to see our community. So from a marketing standpoint, city needs to keep doing exactly what they're doing and not charge the festival, along with the rest of the activities we have downtown. It's just a tremendous bonus. And if you want to, if you want to see failure in any business, just quit advertising and promotion. And that's what the festival does for the city. That's your small investment of our taxpayer dollars to promote our city for economic development and growth. So if you don't promote, I'm going to just say, long-term, it's going to be failure. On the same note, I'd like to talk about the bed tax. The bed tax is the best money you could ever spend. We can't do anything about anything that's happened in the past. But with Casey and the chamber staff that's in place now, and Elaine Naples, who is working on the Tourism Bureau, I'm going to just tell you, in my opinion, you shouldn't be giving them 50% of the bed tax. You should be giving them all of it, or at least three-quarters. Because again, what we have right now is opportunities for tourism. That includes Pickwick Place, Crossroad Candles, Cooper's Market, Carley's, Pelican Coffee House, all the different events we have downtown, First Friday, Candlelight, all that. So again, I would really encourage you to rethink, those of you that don't think that's good money invested, it's not where we need to be cutting our dollars. This is, if there was ever a time to promote without having to develop industrial parks and build buildings and everything else, it's a way to get more dollars into our community and get the good word out. And I hope you'll consider taking that action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation?
May I respond to Mr. Fisher's comment? Am I understanding you correctly on the tourism or the bed tax? There's been no discussion of taking...
Oh, I understand. I'd just say, if it were me, I wouldn't do 50%. I'd do 75 or 100%. Because the amount of money that comes in on the bed tax, quite frankly, I spend, I spend that amount of money on a couple of trade shows. So I, and what I can tell you, Elaine's working on right now, the state, Ohio is one of three states that is really pushing for 2026, which is the 250th anniversary of our nation. On the 21st of May, I believe it is, I'm going with her, because we have been invited to the state Capitol for a display on the Underground Railroad, which we have a nice sign right in front of City Hall about that, and our airport, because of the significance of being the first airport and all the things that Loretta did, to, because that's the two themes they're doing, is Underground Railroad and aviation. Guess what? We went out on that one. So there's some really neat things happening, and I just think we need to make that investment. Well, eventually, with what David Zach's doing in the partnership, which you already invest in, and what's happening in the county and the community, we got some nice things going, but that's going to be a long, that's a long road. Tourism is today. And if you take a look at car show, bike show, all these things, First Fridays, that all brings economic dollars, jobs, and everything else. And I think, as a taxpayer, I think you, as a council, have a responsibility to participate in the promotion of our community.
Can I ask Mr. Fisher a question?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher, I don't think council's saying they're not going to fund the festival. I think what we want to do, because of our financial spot we're in right now, we're trying to cut down money spent.
I understand.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, we're asking to see the financial records from the Bratwurst Festival, and they're not giving them to us. And those records will help us determine in how much we want to continue to fund the festival.
Well, and I get that, and that's totally appropriate, and that's between council and the festival, and I'm sure they'll get that taken care of.
Well, they haven't so far.
Well, I understand that. And then I'm not part of the Festival Association. I'm not on the board or anything else. I know some of the people that are. But what I can tell you is, is there's no way that event, or any of the other downtown events, again, car show, bike show, anything else that's going on, that you could put on when you start factoring in the volunteer labor that's going in. The city is getting a real bang for the buck, and that's, I appreciate your financial situation. Trust me, I'm...
We don't know anything until we see those.
We're going to move on, and if you guys want to talk about the festival...
Yeah, be happy to.
Standing committee on Thursday can be discussed.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're way over the five minutes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Cross Drive. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. First of all, the First Amendment of the Constitution gives each and every one of us the right to free speech, that any statements that I believe to be true in information, research, words, or video. With that said, at the last financial committee meeting, while the subject of the festival came to the floor, some people might say that some of the statements or comments were out of passion about something. I believe it was desperadoes and bullies, that they don't, if they don't get what they want, they will not share, or we will shut down. As it was pointed out, from 2016 to this year, they have received services from the city at no cost, the police, the fire, utilities, and other services. That the festival is also getting the same service again this year. The taxpayer, taxpayers' money is being used for this festival, and they have been given over $120,000 in the past years, and it's growing. Yet, the same old, same old, the city's going out and telling the out-of-town workers to pay more money, because the city needs this money to pay their bills. But council still gives the festival free taxpayers' money. Council also gives them the streets of the city to charge vendors for space at this festival. There are some key factors that came out of that meeting. Smacking the railing in council chambers was uncalled for. The conduct should be professional, especially our elected officials, not being drama queens. The so-called facts or indoor statements that this festival has made to council in the last few minutes have not been true. I believe they should have done some fact-checking before making their own statements. Some have even been pointed out by council members and others. Why did the Bratwurst Festival queen show up, show up at this meeting? She wasn't present at the start of this committee meeting. Did someone text her to go get her to come to the meeting to talk and save the day? Did she have the permission of the board to appear at this meeting? Did she violate her contract with the board? When did the position of Bratwurst Festival queen become political? I thought she could speak for herself and not be spoon-fed by her mother during her presentation. Then out of the blue, the law director made the statement that he could see to contact the attorney for the festival, for only two council members to see the festival books. What does the law director know? The festival board does not want to open their books so far. Then why now? Is the law director having secret meetings or talks with the board behind the council's back? Why isn't not the entire council allowed to be there? Why not everyone in the community? Does the Bratwurst Festival have a new attorney? Does that law, does the law director have a direct contact with, connection with this new attorney? Does the law director work for the city and, city and the council, or is he working for the festival? There are many more facts and statements that have been made during that meeting, will come out later. This council needs to look at the total picture of everything. Are taxpayers' money being spent wisely? Why does one event get more than others? As Mr. Myers stated in a committee meeting, it should be fair to everyone. Council needs to be fair to all events in the city of Bussaras, no matter the size of the event, apples to apples, the same type of service and the same amount of city employee's time. Council needs to peel this ordinance with Bratwurst Festival, Inc., at this time. Wait until later this year and revisit it, looking at other options for all other events in our city. That both, that both council members, Mr. Myers and Ms. Sherick, need to abstain from any voting on this matter, because it's a conflict of interest and possibly Ohio ethic laws violations. Where is the moral integrity in people? What confidence and trust in people and in our community groups and organizations and elected officials? What about fostering open lines of communication? What, what's being done in secret and behind people's backs? When does a mistake become a cover-up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, there are no communications to petition, so standing committee reports. Plating Committee Chair, Mr. Me.
No report at this time.
Does anybody have questions for Plating Committee Chair?
Do you want to add hoc or not? Add hoc?
What's that?
Did you want to do the ad hoc?
Um...
It's not on here, but...
Yeah, you can do that.
Um, we called the order at March 25th, 5:00 PM. We had members Aaron Sherick, James Me, Bill Stuckert, Jared Miller, Ken Long, Greg White was absent, Richard Barton, Ray Thedoff, and Carolyn Shirek.
Just to clarify, this is the ad hoc concerning the International Property Maintenance Code?
Yes, the International Property Maintenance Code. Sorry.
I just wanted it on the audio.
We elected a chair. I was elected chair, and Bill Stuckert was elected vice chair. We agreed, because a lot of us just got the information, we're going to let it go. We have the 2021 Property Maintenance Code, the 2012 Property Maintenance Code, the 2024 Property Maintenance Code. Then Ratliff has revised another code, which actually I like, and I really don't want to agree with Ratliff, but he's got some pretty good points. So the next meeting's April 19th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. So come on in.
Does anybody have questions for that ad hoc committee? Seeing none, public lands and buildings, Chair, Ms. Sherick?
I received an email shortly before the meeting about somebody having an issue with children on a bridge that we might need to look into out at, or in the next public lands meeting, but other than that, I'm not exactly sure of any of the rest of the information at this time.
Does anybody have questions for Public Lands and Buildings Chair?
Mr. President, could you ask people to speak up, because they're hard to hear? I'm, are you guys having a hard time hearing them, or is it just me?
It's me too, but I can't hear half the things.
Yeah, I, I couldn't hear what Jimmy was saying.
I'm sorry. I'll try to speak loud.
Thank you.
Okay, Health and Safety Committee Chair, Mrs. DeShawn?
The Health and Safety Committee meeting met on March 21st. Discussions were held on Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Section 189.22, dealing with tenant roster penalty fee. The matter has been tabled for further research. Discussion was held on eliminating the need for legislation for yearly events such as Bratwurst Festival, Cruisin' with the Cops Custom and Classy Car Show, and Bussaras 500 Bike Show, to name a few, to save on advertisement costs. And Ms. Darla Lewis spoke about the trap neuter return program that she has started for stray or feral cats.
Questions for Health and Safety Chair? Seeing none, Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers?
No report.
Does anybody have questions for Finance Committee? Seeing none, Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
I would like to congratulate the opening of Print Happier. I attended the ribbon-cutting yesterday and look forward to what they're going to bring to the community and hope that they have a good future in their business.
Anybody have questions for Economic Development? Seeing none, Service Committee Chair, Mr. Merritts?
The only thing I have is I have a 715 Dudley has an issue with the water shut-off they want looked into, so they can hook up a new washer in their home, has been looked into. Don't have anything else other than, during the pneumocilline, I'll bring something up later.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none, the Special Ad hoc Committee, that Mrs. DeShawn is the chair?
The Special Ad hoc Committee meeting for rules, procedure for Bussaras City Council, Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 111, council rules of council, and Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 113, ordinances and resolutions, was held on March 21st. The discussion had to do with the amendment to the Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 111, setting forth that committee chairmans can, committee chairs can make a motion, second emotion, vote on a motion, and break a tie. The law director will be providing draft legislation to committee for review.
Any questions for the Special Ad hoc Committee? Traffic Commission, Mr. Truka, Mayor Truka?
I have nothing. I know we were going to go ahead and put that sign on a 90-day trial out there beside a car lot on Nevada Road.
I think it's done. I don't, I think it is. I think it's done, so...
Anybody have any questions for Traffic Commission?
And we recently took care of Ms. Sherick's tree on Rensselaer Street, so her school bus won't get hit anymore, so...
Now that we found the right tree.
Yeah.
Now we trimmed every tree on our municipal litter.
It's amazing. Well, scary how many of them actually needed it, though. But the soccer fields were mowed the other day, and there was grass mowed straight into the road. I don't know who did it, but it does go against our code to mow into the road. You have to make sure it's not in the road, yard waste. So I don't know if they, if somebody can make sure that they know that that's not an appropriate way to do things.
So grass is being mowed already?
Yeah, at the soccer field. Yeah, I watched a kid slide on his bike and looked down, I was like, oh crap, that's what he's sliding on.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
Make a motion?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, Mayor Truka.
Thank you, Mr. President. The CSO number five, the forced main project costs have increased above the engineer's estimated cost from the spring of 2023. I would like to refer this to the Service and the Finance Committee for the increased cost it's going to take to complete this project for this year. Number two, the number, number two, Crawford Park District would like to trade land that they own, and it's for the Lutz Drive, where the city is going to put their lift station on, for their forced main pumping station. The Park District would like to exchange that Lutz property for three parcels of ground that the city of Bussaras owns. So I'd like to have this referred to Public Lands and Buildings, Service and Finance. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Need a motion to make those referrals?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's there? All opposed? Okay, any questions for the mayor? Moving on, Service Directors Report, Mr. Starner?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Allmiller Park Pool is open. generosity of all the community has allowed us to open a pool for the season. And also, I'd like to refer to finance the pool manager's wages, an increase in pay to $20 an hour with more responsibility.
Can we correct that? It's not open yet. It will be open, but I'm positive...
You can swim right now if you choose.
Right now?
That is true. It will be open.
Okay.
Yes.
We don't want people to actually go out there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Need a motion to make the referral for the pool manager wages to finance?
Second.
Um, we'll go with Aaron.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions for the Service Director? Seeing none, our Law Director, Mr. Gerner?
So I think bed tax is currently an open project in Finance Committee, correct? And so then, there was some confusion. So I would ask just to refer Tourism and Visitors Bureau to Economic Development, so that we have both pieces of those in committee, depending on what the council wants to do, just so that they're both there.
I'll make that...
That's all I have for today.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have questions for the Law Director? Seeing none, the Auditor's Report, Ms. Lewis?
Due to Monday being the 1st of April and the auditor's report being due by noon at the same day, at the time of writing this report, I do not have updated figures for the end of March. Regarding projections from Safety Forces, I have included projections for 2025, 2026, and 2027. On the spreadsheet you've received, at the top of each column, I have described the increases I have made. These estimates include two police cruisers a year to bring the fleet into a consistent cycle. Raises are included as contracts currently stand. Other costs not relating to personal services were increased by adjusting for inflation, which I lessened by 0.2% per year. This does not include large purchases that will be needed for the Fire Department. For those purchases, if those purchases were needed in the next three years, we would need to take out a loan to make them, which the Fire Chief over there gave me some bad news, and I got back from my conference. There's an issue with the ladder truck right now, and he's been calling around, trying to get estimates, and was it 80 to 100?
That was the initial, I'll touch a little bit on it, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so there are things coming up. Sorry, I lost my place. If those purchases were needed in the next three years, we need to take out a loan to make those purchases. These projections would need to be adjusted to account for those loan payments. The budget for all Police Department in 2024 is $3,112,365.10. Civilian totals, $491,985. And all Fire Department is $3,319,783.62. The amount to be transferred from the General Fund, if we had begun from the beginning of 2024, would have been $4 million, saving the General Fund roughly $23,000. Two police are currently being paid out of a grant in Fund 266 after 2024. Those officers will need to be paid out of the Safety Forces money as well by the end of 2027. The amount we will need to transfer from the General Fund to support Safety Forces will be roughly 4.5 million. We will need to find a way to fund the other half million. As for referrals, I would like to refer appropriations for Drug Law Enforcement Fund regarding the deposit of drug forfeiture funds that were deposited by the Police Department, appropriations of the March Grant for the Fire Department, transferring slash appropriating General Fund budget to the Safety Forces Fund, appropriating for a transfer line into the General Fund for the transfers to Safety Forces, appropriate money into the demolition fund for a house that had burned down within the city. And then I'm adding one more, Miranda, sorry. Refer to, and these are all to finance, the, prefer property tax levy or levies, just for discussion.
That's already in committee.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
So we need a motion to do the other referral, she said?
I'll make that motion.
Aaron was first. We'll go Kevin second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Auditor Lewis, the $500,000 that you're projecting in 2027, additional that we would need, did you factor any buyouts into that, or is buyouts going to be above and beyond that?
Buyouts would be above and beyond that.
Okay, second question, did you, did the increased Medicaid revenue that they're paying more for EMS billing, is that factored into that?
That is not factored in, because I talked about Chad with this briefly. We're just not sure what it's actually going to come in at. Some people, people are promising a lot, but we just don't know if it'll deliver, I guess.
Okay, so buyouts not being in that $500,000 is significant?
Mm-hmm.
That could easily be $500,000 over three years, right?
I wouldn't say easily. It would just depend when people retired, but there's a possibility, yes.
So possibility of million-dollar shortfall in 2027, not accounting for equipment purchases in the Fire Department for apparatus replacement?
I don't want to commit to that number.
Well, we're just projecting now. We're just projecting. The $23,000 saving on the General Fund, that was an accounting practice savings, right?
What was it? I'm sorry.
The $23,000... The 23,000 that was saved in the general fund?
Yeah, that was just what we wouldn't have to transfer. I believe the original general fund total was 4,023,000 and some change. So just transferring the 4 million to cover it would allow that to remain in the general fund.
And I am 100% against loans. We need to find, we need to get our revenue projections in order and not be buying fire trucks and police cars with loans. We need to run a specific property tax levy or something for them, so we're not paying interest on known replacement items, if that makes any sense. Do we have questions for the auditor? No questions? Moving on then, the fire chief has a presentation.
So there's nothing from the police?
There is nothing in the packet. He's not here, so I'm not mentioning it.
So I guess to start off with, going back to the question over the concerns about the ladder truck. Been dealing with them, some problems for technically about four years on it with just electronics that we've been able to send the critical modules out for repair. And we were able to get them repaired. I started having a problem around, a little before the first of the year with another module, and we'd been sending it in and tried to get a replacement, and they've been obsolete for a long time. They sent me two that were supposed to be good, but they were broken when they were sent, and can't get any replacements for it. So what we've got to do is there's a, it's broke down into a couple of different phases on what we could do or whatever that obviously we're going to, you know, potentially going to go with the cheapest route on that, and it is to only replace the, the electronics in the platform, which allows for controls to work up there. It includes leveling and, and just all your safety features of the apparatus, and that's the main critical portion of why we have to need to get them replaced. The truck is set up where it, you can operate it manually, but there are no safeties involved with that at all. So that's why the, you know, it's not, if it doesn't, if the safeties aren't working, it's not compliant. It's required to have a annual inspection yearly, and so right now it's, it has not passed that annual test. So I've sent out and reached out, got a estimate, not really, haven't got an estimate. I've got a parts list so far on, on what the electronics have to be replaced, waiting on an estimate of, for them to be installed and the pricing of them. My, my original assumption was going to be around, around 80,000. So, but with it, with them giving me a smaller list of parts that have to be replaced, I'm hoping it'll come in a little, a little under that. So that's what we're looking into with that. So moving on, any other questions regarding the ladder truck?
I have a question.
Sure.
How often is the ladder truck used?
It goes in spells. It's, it's, it varies. It's, I'll have the annual report out there and you can, I should be able to get that to you guys next week.
Okay.
And that will show what's, it's where it's utilized for emergency calls. It doesn't necessarily show us what it's utilized for non-emergency stuff.
Okay.
So like when we go out and help replace ball field lights, or we're helping work on the flagpole at the square, or we do that for some other civic organizations that we'll, we'll take it out and actually go up and, you know, help replace, you know, do maintenance on their flagpoles or whatever for those. So that's not reflected in it. I mean, it's, you know, that's not part of the, you know, required, required use of it, but at the same time, it is, that's training use and operational use so that it's, can be used.
So do we have buildings here in town that would require the ladder truck?
Yes, and it's one of those, there's, there's, there's multiple different, everybody's like, well, you need 100 for a ladder for. Well, it's, it's not all about the height. It's actually, it's the reach from the road. Because it'll actually, also when you put it in the center, if you put it in the center of the street and it'll reach out 90 feet, well, from the center of the street and then extra, you know, you need that to be able to reach a house roof or whatever with setbacks and stuff like that, because it, it doesn't go off-road well. It weighs 78,000 pounds. It'll get, you know, days like this, you'll get it, it'll get stuck. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's been used for other things, like you can reach it out over a pond if somebody's...
Yep, mhm. Yeah, we've, it's been on, I wouldn't say rescues, but recovery efforts on, over ponds and other stuff with ice and, and different things of that sort.
Have you ever done a high, a high rescue with it?
Not to its full extent height, but we've actually, we've used it out to, actually for out of Manel, it's not tall enough, but we used it, had to use it as a elevated standpipe to get a hose line up to, into the distributor box out there for a fire that they've had out there. And it's been on several grain, grain bin fires and, and stuff like that throughout the county and actually surrounding counties.
The most recent fire was over Crestline with, where, or CTR?
Yes.
I remember seeing a picture of that in Crawford right now.
Okay, so moving along. What my main effort was for here tonight was to explain the solar eclipse that's going to happen on Monday. Me with along several other of the emergency departments throughout the county have been meeting with Jet Kander over the EMA for approximately a little over a year. And we were going over stuff that, you know, everybody says, you know, it's, you know, we're looking at the worst that could potentially happen. We're not saying that the worst is going to happen, but you've just got to be, that's the whole part of it is emergency preparedness. We had examples from the, I believe it was the 2017 eclipse that was, that went through Kentucky and Oregon. And they had areas that were, had over 100,000 people come to their area to watch the eclipse, and they were totally gridlocked. I don't believe that's going to happen here, but it's one of those things we had to look at just to, you know, we've been working with ODOT, the state patrol, the sheriff's office, you know, it's, there's a, there's a lot that goes into it that not everybody over, you know, that most people overlook. You know, we, a lot of the stuff that we, that everybody's look at is what are the things to do? Well, so the state website there has got all this stuff that you can go click on. Bonnie has this on the city's website, and it shows all the events that are going on in the county. The, the state's motto was come early, stay late. So a lot of local businesses and stuff have went along with that and have tried to use this as a, as a moneymaker to promote our area and promote their businesses. And hopefully everything turns out well for everybody. The, the other thing that's, that goes along with that is the, the Ohio EMA site, and this is where they have a lot of the safety and preparedness precautions on there for people that, you know, you need to have the, the correct solar glasses on to look at the sun. You don't want to look at it while you're driving. We was surprised that one of the states had to promote that. You cannot see out of those glasses at all unless they're looking at something that is extremely bright. One of the other recent things that's been going on is supposedly there's some non-approved solar glasses that are going around. If it hurts, if you get a hold of one of these pairs and you look at the sun and it's hurting your eyes, don't continue to look at it. It's, you should be able, with the proper glasses, you should be able to look at it without any pain or, you know, hurting your eyes. So this is going to be a good tool for everybody. Bonnie is going to put this up on the city site tomorrow so that everybody can see it. And it just gives, it gives a lot of tips for, you know, people coming into town where, you know, you're, get gas early, make sure you have a full tank when you get in so that you can obviously then travel out. You know, as emergency preparedness for us, we, you know, we had to look at that for, you know, make sure that we have fuel available to us for emergency services and city services for the, you know, trash collection and, and everything that goes along with that, water department and all that. So, you know, we had, we've got reserves out there at the, at the city garage for that source. So have cash, you know, if we do have a large influx of people come in, you know, if it's like the Bratwurst Festival, you know that, hey, your cell phones don't work that great if there's a large influx of people. There, so they're, they're promoting people that come in, have a paper map. I don't know if people know what the paper maps actually are, but I guess they do still do exist. Because that's just one of those things with cell service, you know, it may not work. We're actually, right now, the forecast is not very good for us. The, it's supposed to be cool over the weekend, a little cloudy, and then, you know, Monday, there's still a chance of rain. So obviously, we don't know what it is going to be until probably the day of, but if it's rainy or cloudy, anybody that has came here, we, we know there's people that have, that are coming to the area for, for this event, they're going to be trying to get someplace else. So we're, we're not recommending to anybody that's, if you really don't care about the event and you're, don't try to travel during the event. Local schools have all canceled for the day just as a safety precaution for getting kids to home, back home. So, you know, there's, there's a lot that's went into this. Let's see, one of those other things. They're saying have cash, have water with you, extra, you know, if you've got small children and you're traveling, have extra formula, you know, extra food for your pets if you're traveling, that's just in case that you, there is a potential you could get, could get stuck here. So that's just all this kind of the stuff that's been going on with it. And we've, you know, like I said, it's just only a few days away. So we'll see how it goes. Any other questions for me regarding the?
Thank you.
Yep.
Need a motion to accept the city officer's?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding reports standing special committees and of city officers, is there any visitor input? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 17-2024, it's the transfers ordinance, amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2023 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $21,000 within the filtration category and in the personal, personal services line item by $24,000 within the distribution category, and increasing the current balance of the contractual services line item by $45,000 within the filtration category, all for said line items and categories being within the waterworks subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 18-2024, amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2023 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $9,450 to the personal services line item within the engineer and development category within the program seven, general government subparagraph, within the general fund, and finally appropriating from unappropriated waterworks funds, the sum of $105,000 to the contractual services line item within the distribution category within the waterworks subparagraph declaring an emergency.
Need a motion except those as a first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may input, may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but it's really good if, if you just say who does the first and who does the second, because I keep hearing two voices, and you don't always say, say who actually does it, and then we find out in the minutes later. But the people watching don't get all that information, so it might be good because they can all hear the microphones. Please.
I will try to announce that.
Thank you.
Okay, no public participation, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed ordinance 16-2024 for BCO, I31.09, and ordinance amending and supplementing section 931.09 entitled Funding of Solid Waste Replacement Fund of Chapter 931 entitled Garbage and Rubbish of Title VII entitled Garbage and Rubbish of Part IX entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio. Proposed resolution 213-2024, it's the street closures for cruising with the cops, authorizing and directing the public service safety director of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorize emergency personnel for cruising with the cops custom and classic car show on Saturday, June 8, 2024. Proposed resolution 214-2024, it's Bucyrus 50 Bike Show, authorizing and directing the service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, accepts authorized emergency personnel on Saturday, July 27, 2024 for the 50 Bike Show sponsored by the Bucyrus Police Explorers Post 229.
Need a motion to accept those as a second reading?
Second.
That was Zion and Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time. We don't have any. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time?
Proposed ordinance 12-2024, it's bond requirements for the utility right of way, amending and supplementing section 903.01 entitled permit required, emergency exception for public utility under chapter 903 entitled street excavations, under title one entitled street and sidewalk areas, under part nine entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyrus.
Need a motion to accept that as the final reading?
Stop move.
Second.
And that was Aaron and Zion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time. Well, I asked the law director, Mr. Gerner, would there be any advantage to passing the bond requirements as an emergency as far as the 30 days going to an effect? Now, I know it's been going through three readings, but, I mean, do you, I kind of feel like there might be an advantage here if that was passed as an emergency tonight?
Yeah, I mean, so it would become immediately.
Yeah, just so it doesn't have to go through the 30-day waiting to go into effect.
I think that the, I think it's on its final reading.
Yeah, it, it is on the final reading, but it can still be passed as an emergency.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
You think that there's an advantage here?
I do.
Okay.
Be happy to make that motion when the time comes.
Any other public participation on that final reading? Seeing none, refer back to originating committee. Proposed ordinance 12 dash 2024 is referred back to service. Proposed ordinance 16 dash 2024 is referred back to service. Proposed ordinance 17 dash 2024 is referred back to finance. Proposed ordinance 18 dash 2024 is referred back to finance. Proposed resolution 213 dash 2024 is referred back to health and safety. Proposed resolution 214 dash 2024 is referred back to health and safety. Committee report on pending legislation, service committee.
Service committee is in favor of bond requirements for utilities right of ways and BCO 931.09. Oh, proposed ordinance, sorry. Proposed ordinance 12 dash 2024, bond requirements, utilities right of ways. Proposed ordinance 16 dash 2024, BCO 931 dash 09.
Finance committee?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 17 dash 2024 for transfers. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 18 dash 2024 for appropriations.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 213 dash 2024, street closures for cruising with the cops, and health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 214 dash 2024, Bussaras 50 bike show.
Okay, further consideration of pending legislation, ordinance 17 dash 2024, which is transfers. For the second and third reading, a proposed ordinance number 17 dash 2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text and declared an emergency?
Second.
That was Kevin and Aaron.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 17 dash 2024?
Second.
That was Kevin and Aaron again.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17 dash 2024 is duly adopted. It's ordinance 18 dash 2024, more appropriations for the second and third reading, a proposed ordinance 18 dash 2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text and declared an emergency?
Second.
Kevin and Zion.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 18 dash 2024?
Second.
That's Kevin and Chris.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 18 dash 2024 is duly adopted. And then the ordinance 12 dash 2024, which is the bond requirements in the utility right of way was originally gone through three readings. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text and declared an emergency?
Second.
That was Kevin and Chris.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't say the word adopt in that.
Right, that was just, that was the motion, just suspend the rules and make an emergency instead.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 12 dash 2024?
Second.
That was Kevin and Chris.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Bee?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 12 dash 2024 is duly adopted as an emergency.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Could I ask for you to explain why we're doing this particular piece as an emergency? I mean, I know why, but for the general public to understand.
So this particular ordinance is requiring a million-dollar bond for contractors working in the underground, digging in our right of ways, and there's a lot of them out there right now. And yes, it did go through three readings, but they're kind of, well, Mr. Mayor, can you explain what they tried to do? They wanted to go through the middle of town and...
Right, right now, what's, what's happening right now with Omni Fiber, what's happening with Omni Fiber is they went ahead and we had meetings with them and telling them that we do not want you to go down through Sandusky Street. We have to reserve Sandusky Street because we have all kinds of underground wiring for our, our PED meters or our, our push-button light, red light crossings and lots of underground wiring and we, we want to...
The lampposts.
Lampposts, we want to preserve all that for future because we have a state of Ohio project coming up here in the next two years and we will consent, we will continue to put handicap buttons and some of it's going to be hearing impaired buttons and they'll also be for blind people. And so we want to preserve all that underground area for our future use. So now what Omni Fiber has said, we proposed, we told them, we want you to go down the alley to the east of Sandusky Street and we want you to go west of Sandusky Street. Use those as your thoroughfares for your Omni Fiber network. And now Omni Fiber's saying...
This is just between Mary Street and...
Charles.
Okay.
And so now what they're saying is, well, we don't like that idea. So they are proposing, they, they're saying that they're going to try to approach American Electric Power, but in the past, they've approached American Electric Power twice and they've been turned down by American Electric Power two times in a row for putting their fiber optics on the power poles. And so now it's going to be, what we've done thus far is we've tried to limit how much, how far ahead they can get on putting this underground fiber because they were running the city ragged on trying to find all the underground utilities. We're trying to stay ahead of them. And of course, they were been running into lots of our utilities and between that and breaking people sidewalks and, and so right now, we, we need that million-dollar bond to make sure that we are able to keep them to the point that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And so their original plans they had submitted, they were going down the alleys.
Yeah, but since then, they've changed their mind. And the biggest thing is going downtown too, is, you know, there's, there's some underground caverns yet or full set coal shoots yet. And so that, that's another reason we want to keep them out of downtown, so.
Well, and I think another is if we would have passed the legislation tonight as regular, it would have not become law until 30 days after today. But now by doing it as an emergency, it becomes law immediately.
I'm just thinking, you know, the, the 30 days that could go, if something was to happen and that bond wasn't in place.
Oh, I totally agree. I just wanted the public to understand, because I know that's sort of been a contention. People feel that, you know, council in the past has passed legislation constantly as an emergency.
This is protecting city infrastructure.
Exactly.
So I, I think it is an emergency that needs...
Yes. And I appreciate that being explained so the public understands.
There has been some water lines that have been hit.
Thank you.
I think everybody knows the boil advisories and stuff.
And to follow up with it, Tommy's got a, a running list of a punch list that he's keeping track of day to day and, and like Kevin had brought up about broken sidewalks and, and...
And, and the way that a bond works is they get that money back after we agree that they have fixed everything. So, you know, I don't know, the, my only concern, my, my biggest only concern is, is some, some of the things like the sewer lines, you won't know that for years that they've been hit.
Bond's actually an insurance program essentially where they're, they're buying a policy worth a million dollars of coverage for anything that they might damage that we can cash in on. They won't get their premium back.
Okay, old and unfinished business. I don't think we have any, but I'm going to ask, is there any?
We still need to do the... Oh, we did it. I got lost so far.
Thank you.
The airport commission appointment?
I was going to do that under new business.
Oh, okay.
No old business?
Then I'll ask, excuse me, I'll ask Law Director Gerner if this comes under old or new business. I want to set up an ad hoc committee meeting for council rules, Bussaras codified ordinance 111 and Bussaras codified ordinance chapter 113. I just want to find out though, Mr. Gerner, are you going to be prepared with your draft verbiage for this Thursday's committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So then if it's okay with a committee, then we'll just plan on having an ad hoc committee meeting at 7:00 or after the regular scheduled committee meetings?
This coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday, April the 4th?
This is for, this is for what now?
Rules of procedure.
Right.
We were talking about the airport commission.
He's...
We're kind of under old business still.
Okay.
New business.
And I was checking, I wasn't sure if the special ad hoc meeting would come under old or new.
Okay, so meeting at or after 7:00 PM this coming Thursday for the ad hoc. Any other old business?
Thank you.
None? New business? We have a vacancy on the airport commission. The airport commission has sent us a recommendation in a letter. And I think Chris wanted to make a motion.
I want to make a motion. I have been contacted by several people who would like another person to be added to that list. Be Lynn McKeever. I had a bunch of people talk to me, reach out to me and think that he would be a good person for this, a good fit for it. He's also very interested in doing it. So that'd be somebody I would like to add to that list.
You want to make a motion for us to appoint him to the airport?
I would like to make a motion to appoint him to it, yes.
And who did the airport say?
The letter, they had Lynn McKeever in the letter, the written letter.
But you hadn't given that full amount.
Yeah, I think it was emailed to all you members.
But everybody out there, you, you keep saying you want everybody to know what's going on, so they sent us a letter that gave a name and then you didn't give the name.
Yeah, and I've actually had to...
You know what, I, I really apologize. We probably should have put that letter in the council packet.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I know I got the email, I was just...
I got the email too, yeah.
This is televised, so...
So what did you not get?
I got the email.
She did get the letter.
It was, everybody else didn't know. He just kind of gave partial information and then had Chris say something that didn't...
Same person.
It didn't come across as being the same information, so I just wanted to make sure that that was given.
On my part, that was just people reaching out to me and also would rather, wouldn't want him on, just not the commission, but other people that have a lot to do with it.
And Lynn has a plane out there.
Yeah.
So Chris has made a motion to appoint Lynn McKeever as their second.
I'll second that.
Aaron has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Other new business? Seeing none, need, nobody's absent, so nobody needs excuse. Referrals?
We have the CSO 5 Force Main project to service and finance.
Here, I just, I just read it. Um, CSO 5 Force Main is to service and finance.
Let me know if you can't read anything.
Trading of land with Crawford Park District for lots of drive properties and public lands and buildings, service and finance. Pool manager wages to finance. Appropriations for Drug Law Enforcement Fund to finance. Appropriations for Marx Grant to finance. Transferring, appropriating general fund...
101.
101 to the Safety Forces Fund 202 to finance. Appropriating for a transfer line into general fund. From general fund into Safety Forces Fund.
Into general fund, into the Safety Forces Fund.
Appropriating for a transfer line into general fund into Safety Forces Fund to finance. Appropriations for demolition fund to finance tourism and Visitors Bureau to economic development. And then Kaylee had asked for a levy to be, but that already is in committee. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was Aaron and Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned at 8:07 PM.